Board of County Commissioners now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Commissioner Jones, if you'll lead us in prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given unto us. We thank you for the opportunities, Lord, and the time that you've given us here today to decide and to look at things for the future of Franklin County, not just for our todays, but all our tomorrows, as many as you shall give us. Thank you, Lord, for wisdom, discretion, and understanding, the day in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge is to be the light of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Stayed moved.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries also. Next will be Department Director's Report. Mr. Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works.
Morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
I'm good.
All right. Got a couple of items this morning that we talked about the last meeting on our dump trucks, which the man called me and said it'd probably be somewhere in the middle of March, trucks should be ready. And on the inmate supervisor position we had open, and I hired Ricky Rickard.
Ricky Rickard?
Rickards, from Carabel. I had a interview like aid, but nobody wants to watch the inmates, basically. They want them to either run equipment or, you know, drive a dump truck, so...
And he's coming, uh, Mr. Chairman, and he's coming back in at the starting pay of twenty-five?
Twenty-five-five, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And as an inmate supervisor.
Okay.
All right. Let's see. You getting them leased trucks?
Sir?
You getting the leased trucks?
Yeah, the leased trucks, which will be in, we're gonna lease them yearly, just, you know, see how it works out. I talked to some of the other counties, and they say they love it. They've been doing it for years, so...
How many you getting?
Any other comments from the board, Mr. Howard? Thank you, Howard. Keep up the good work. Next will be Ms. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, just a report that we had a little vandalism last night at East Point ball field. Was nothing major. Broke any concession stand. Took some of the product out of, also cut the necks from around the concession stand that we put up to keep the foul balls from hitting the people. That's about it.
Any comments from the board from Mr. Fonda this morning?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I met with Mr. Davis last night at the ball field, and without going too much into it, I would like to make a motion that we look at, entertain the idea, see if it's feasible to add game cameras or something at all three of our ball fields, especially in the concession stand. Just like I told Mr. Davis last night, I'm not first trying to send somebody's teenage kid to jail or nothing, but if we could catch them and maybe make them do some review service, maybe we can stop some of this going forward. So I make a motion that we look at getting game cameras, at least one for each ball field at concession stand.
Sir. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion by the board?
Might be a drone, sir.
Might be.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from Mr. Davis from the board this morning?
Yeah, I'm wondering how your equipment is.
It's coming pretty good, Commissioner. We actually have two knucker booms in the shop right now.
Two of them now?
Yes, sir.
Is they gonna cause a lot to fix, or?
Uh, the cylinders is leaking on them. Yeah, it'd be nice if we had that lease program from them, but I haven't found anybody to do that yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, keep on checking. Might run it. They don't do it for knucker booms, huh?
Right, that's correct. They do not.
A knucker boom takes a lot of beating, that.
Exactly.
Anything else from Mr. Davis from the board? Thank you, Fonda.
Okay.
Next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two action items this morning. One is requesting the board to reject all RFQs for the emergency planning disaster recovery and hazard mitigation grant program service. After speaking with FEMA's procurement agent, we're not completely in compliance with the CFR 200. Also, our new EMPA grant states that when we go out for any solicitation that it has to, and contracts, the state has to review them and approve them.
On that issue, Pam, does that mean that we can no longer get this grant, or we gotta go back and do some things and then reapply?
No, sir. This is, this is, this right here was for the contractual service for emergency management person to help us with our project worksheets, those things, and, I mean, FEMA's really, really strict with the new rules about the CFR. I've taken that class four times and still, every time I go, and I told him that, I get a different answer when I ask the question. And I explained to him, there, we cannot, this county cannot afford to lose any money by getting dinged on anything that if, by not being in compliance with that CFR 200. And there's so many different facets to it. I mean, it's just unreal. And I went back and looked at my RFQ, and this time I'm also gonna include that, you know, whoever the contractor is has to be, know everything about CFR 200. That way, they can help us with other RFQs and contracts to make sure that we get the correct wording in it, because there's language that has to be in your contract. FEMA's looking for it.
So we can reapply?
Yes, sir. We can, I'm just asking y'all today just to reject that RFQ that I put out.
Okay.
And, um...
And we'll redo it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll redo it, and then I've got to send my solicitation to the state so they can review it and tell me that it's okay by them.
Pleasure to the board on that first issue.
I make a motion that we reject all RFQs for the emergency planning disaster recovery and hazard mitigation grant.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Continue on this count.
The second one is requesting to go out for RFQs with documented quote for the hurricane loss mitigation program. Now, that's where we redo the houses.
Pleasure to the board.
And what's kinda strange is they don't require us to do the CFR.
I make a motion that we go out for RFQs.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
This over the county or this?
This one is the county ones, Commissioner. I think maybe, I know Betty's already advertised for the cities, I think, but Tress just finished getting the rest of our houses in, and we got them inspected, and we've sent the paperwork to the state for them to do the cost benefit analysis.
So I guess my question would be since Betty done, since the city got it, they won't do it in the city limits?
No, sir, we're not doing it. We're not doing it in the city limits. No, sir. That would be double dipping for the city, so we can't do that. So ours is just, you know, the county.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries also. Anything for the board from Ms. Pam this morning?
Yeah, uh, we both will be in that snow cone tonight.
I'm sure that when I go back and look, there's probably gonna be a, I'm sure there'll be a webinar today.
Okay.
And if we are, then we'll, I'll find out from DOT what their plans are.
But our work for us isn't, it'd be Wednesday morning with cold weather.
Yes.
So it'd be down to the low twenties.
Mm-hmm.
Wednesday morning, mid-twenty.
So we'll get that information and get it out, and I'll find out from them what their plans are. And then we'll start getting back out and checking on the few homeless that we know of. We'll start checking on those.
But also, you have to add the pet. That's what worries me, is the pet. You know, we see a lot of dogs that freeze in this kind of weather. Dogs and cats.
We'll start pushing it out, that, you know, there's gonna be, you know, whatever they tell us the tipper's gonna, with possibility of snow flurries. And that's the way they had it on the news this morning, was snow flurries.
That's what we got last time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any other comments from the board from Ms. Pam this morning? Thank you, Ms. Pam. Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestran, Extension Office Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just have one item for informational purposes for you today. I have put together my 2017 Extension Program Highlights Report again, as I did last year, so I'll have a copy for each of you. Apologize for not having that in your packet, but I didn't get it printed out until this morning. There's one here for Michael as well.
Any comments from the board for Mr. Eric? If there be no comments, thank you for coming in, Eric.
Thank you. I also left some copies on the podium out here when I came in for folks to pick up if they would like to.
Okay. Next on the agenda would be Ms. Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have no action items, but I do have a few key dates for community awareness. Beginning February 1st through April 12th, we will be offering free AARP tax aid. It'll be at both of our locations. February 1st starts in Carabel. That will always be on Thursdays from 10:00 to 3:00. The next appointment would be on February 8th at East Point, and they will revert, alternate between locations. Customers do need to sign up for an appointment. There is information at the library that they need to have. We are also, Friends of the Library is hosting their first annual fundraiser for 2018. That is Saturday, February 3rd at the East Point location. That's the annual soup, bread, and book sale. It will begin at 10:00 a.m. for the book sale. Soup sale will begin at 11:00. This event will also be February 24th in Carabel. Soup sells fast, especially in our cold weather, so we ask that everyone that wants to participate join us early. We also, today is the deadline for the Master Gardening Program to sign up for that. Our monthly gardening programs will begin again February 13th. We have computer classes going to be held at the East Point location beginning in February, on February 6th. These classes will be on Tuesdays. They will cover Windows 10 and Excel. No registration is necessary. We have Pam Tullis, who is a certified Microsoft trainer, who will be there. Again, those will be on Tuesdays beginning February 6th. We have a lot of other things on our calendar, so people can stop by the library, check our website, check Facebook to see our monthly calendar. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Anything from the board?
Mr. Chairman? I have a couple of things. Ms. Lisa, I actually took the time the other day to look at the website for the library, and I think it's really, really good.
We are, our website is actually under construction. Hopefully, you noticed that as well.
I did, I did. The only thing that I seen that was kind of off, and it's probably because it's under construction, is the little drop-down menu, the boxes not, like, wide enough to actually see.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
You have to kind of maneuver with it. On another note, and I don't know if I was the only commissioner to get this letter or email, but I got an email from one of your staff concerning the library, and I won't talk about it a whole lot, but I will say this, I really didn't like that.
I was unaware of that email.
Because my job is to help you do your job as a county commissioner, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off, but that just is not the proper way for things at the Capitol.
I was unaware of that. I was not aware until Michael Barone actually brought that to my attention. I have discussed that with staff. They understand the chain of command, but they felt that I did not understand how the county works with the library. So I do apologize for that.
Oh, no, there's no apology necessary. I just wanted to make sure that, you know what I mean?
Right.
It was addressed.
Right, yeah. And other staff is aware of that information in that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
On the tax thing, Ms. Lisa, you've got a number, you can, what the number is you got to dial?
I'm sorry? I didn't...
On your tax program?
On my what program? I couldn't hear you.
Tax.
Oh, tax, yes.
What is the number you dial to get apartment?
You actually have to come to the library and sign up. There is a book at both locations, because we have intake forms and information sheets that you have to have to complete to bring back to your appointment.
Okay, so...
Yeah. You could call and schedule an appointment, but you still need to stop by early enough to have that information to fill out, to bring back, because it helps you be prepared to deal with the representatives, so there's a lot of information you don't have to give that they can automatically key.
Any hour?
Their hours is gonna be 10:00 to 3:00, and our library hours is 9:00 to 5:30 at the East Point, and 9:00 to 6:00 at Carabel.
So they can come in at your hours any time?
Right, exactly. They can come in to schedule their appointment. They can start scheduling now, all the way up through April 12th.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from Ms. Lisa from the board this morning? Thank you for coming in. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Jason Puckett, Airport Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. Got two action items for you. The first is a resolution to change the project name from Airfield Rehabilitation and Improvements to Security Fence Upgrade. There is some clarification needed by the FDOT, so I have an action item for you to change the resolution name for that. Secondly, the JPA that we're doing the commercial access road on, that JPA needs to be extended, so I'm asking you that you'd sign the extension for that. We've coordinated with the FDOT. The reason for the extension is for wetland permitting. We're, over the holidays, we wasn't able to get those guys to move as quickly as we wanted to, so we wanna make sure we don't have any issues with the JPA, so we wanna extend that if we can.
Mr. Chairman, before we go into a motion, several years ago, we renamed this airport,
Franklin County, Apalachicola Airport, because it is a Franklin County airport. So that need, the name of the airport needs to be corrected and put in there.
Okay. Yes, I'll...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You understand what she said? It's Franklin County Airport located in Apalachicola?
Yes.
Or she wants that stated properly?
Yes, sir. I'll make sure that's...
Or it has nothing to do with Franklin County here, and Franklin County is over the airport.
I got you. Yes, sir.
Okay. The question I had is, what you're changing is from stormwater and drainage improvements to security fence clearing.
Yes, sir.
Now, are we getting away from our stormwater and our drainage, or we're just retyling the grant?
We're just retyling the grant. I'll give you an update on the, we've got stormwater that's being completed now. We're almost done with that project. What we're doing, we're just renaming this grant. We had some money left over. We wanna rename this grant to Security Fence Improvement, is all we're doing.
Okay. That's the only question I have, and I read through that.
Yes, sir.
Now, let's take this step by step. Commissioner Lockley has made a motion to grant your request here on the resolution. Do we have a second?
I second it, as long as we add, Jason, the comments in about your question.
Okay.
That it's okay to do this, that it does not take away from your stormwater and drainage projects out there.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Yeah, how long it gonna take, Dave?
For the, for the security fence? Hopefully, we can, we can have the new grant to be issued next month, and then we'll go out to bid, so hopefully that'll happen here, you know, in the next couple of months.
Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries? And you had an issue with the extension of another grant?
Yes, the, we're asking for an extension request on the commercial access road. The reason for that is we had some wetland delineation and wetland permitting that has taken a little longer than expected, and we don't wanna run into any issues with the grant expiring.
Pleasure to the board?
So moved.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know how long it gonna take?
We're hoping that can be completed by 1st of summer. That's our, that's our, that's our hope. I think what's gonna take the longest is getting the permitting and the planning done, and once we go out to construction, I think it's gonna go pretty quickly.
Or if it don't, you'll have to come back in and get another extension?
Hopefully not. Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, not to be redundant, but we have the same wording problem in this as well.
As far as Apalachicola and Franklin County Airport?
Yes, sir.
Jason, could you correct that?
I will make sure that's corrected on, before you sign this. Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the board? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries also.
Real quickly, more updates. The electrical upgrade, or the lighting upgrade that's going on, all the original work has been completed, and we're adding a new regulator for runway six and two-four that we had some leftover money from that grant. That regulator should be complete by end of March. The drainage improvements that's going on out there for right now, all the pipe work has been completed, and they're finishing concrete replacement this month. All the original work should be completed by the end of January, and we're adding some replacement of another pipe section because we did come under budget. We have some money left over, so we're gonna do some additional work out there. The access road, the industrial park, obviously, we know the permitting agencies were tough to get in contact with over the holidays. That's what's precipitating the extension request. And then the economic development plan that Beth Kirkland's been working on, she should have a final deliverable to you guys, hopefully by the end of February. I will say that we, our tractors have been inoperable back out there for a while, but Howard Neighbors has done a tremendous job helping us out, for the road department keeping us, keeping us up and running as much as he could. And I will say that Centric Aviation is doing an incredible job. They have, they've put quite a bit of their own resources and finances into the FBO building. I believe they're changing out all the flooring and doing a lot of painting, and a lot of rehab and remodeling, and so even though that's our building, the fact that they put their money in that, I wanna make that publicly known, that I appreciate them doing that.
So that's pretty much been a seamless transition?
Yeah, as good as it can be, to be honest with you. It's been incredible. They've hit the ground running and have done a tremendous job. I would like to bring Andrew and Tara up real quickly, if they're here. They have a quick announcement. I know time's of the essence, but they have a quick announcement they'd like to bring to you today.
Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tara Malm. I represent Centric Aviation. This is Andrew. As part of our commitment to community outreach, we are excited to announce the Centric Aviation Store to New Heights Scholarship. We'll be awarding three $1,000 flight training scholarship to Franklin County students. This will give the students the opportunities to start their initial flight training, working towards their private pilot license. Our hope with this is to inspire the youth of Franklin County to explore the many exciting aviation careers in the industry. We hope to present this scholarship at the Aviation Day in the spring, and we would like to extend an invitation to the board to be a part of that ceremony.
Okay, just keep county staff informed of when, what day that's gonna be, and we'll see if we can get a representative out there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. As you all probably know, the State of Florida has targeted aviation and space aeronautics as a, as a target industry, which they promote, prefer. So this goes in line with the State of Florida's trying to promote it as far as a career for people, is aviation. So I appreciate y'all's leadership in trying to get some local kids involved in this industry, because it's a growing industry in Florida, and we hope to expand it here in Franklin County.
What could I ask for?
Yes.
How you go about, you say y'all gonna give grants, or what you, when you sign up, how you apply, or tell me a little, hit on that a little more?
We have it listed up on our website. I also spoke to Tracy Moses, the Superintendent of Schools. We're working with her to get it up on the Franklin County website. They actually have a separate page for scholarships, so it'll be posted there as well.
So they're letting the kids know what we're saying?
Yeah, I just want...
Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have anything else for the board?
That's all I had.
Any questions from the board of Jason this morning? Keep up the good work, Jason.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next will be public comments. Three-minute time limit. If you'd like to speak, come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Alma Pew, and I'm with the Florida Department of Health here in Franklin County with the Closing the Gap Program. The Closing the Gap Program promotes incarnated efforts to reduce and ultimately eliminate racial and ethnic health disparities, such as diabetes, cancers, obesity, and heart disease. The grant is funded through Leon County, the Office of Minority Health and Health Equity. The reason why I'm here this morning is just to encourage everyone in Appalachia today, or Franklin County today. The Closing of the Gap is kicking off a health nutritional challenge, and we are partnering with the Mayor Van Johnson, and the challenge will kick off today at 192 14th Street, which is the matchbox here in Apalachicola. And there will be other organizations here to take our blood pressure, our glucose number, our, talk about our heart diseases and things of that nature. And we would certainly like everyone in the community to come out and participate in this nutritional challenge. It's from 12:00 to 2:00, and we certainly hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Nicole Sandoval. I'm here with the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County as well. We just wanted to come out and encourage everyone today to get your flu shot. It's not too late to get your flu shot. We are seeing a rapid increase here lately with the flu, and so I just wanted to come out and let you know, this flu vaccination is offered at many of the local provider offices, as well as the local county health department. It's recommended for any infants that are six months of age or older, and also it's recommended for everyone, including pregnant women. Please also remember, it's essential during this season to practice good hygiene by properly and frequently washing your hands to help prevent the spread of the seasonal flu. Make it a habit to clean and disinfect commonly used surfaces in your home, school, and office. You can take additional steps to ward off the flu by coughing or sneezing into a tissue or your elbow, and even avoiding touching your face. If you are sick, the Florida Department of Health recommends that sick people stay home until they're fever-free for at least 24 hours, without the use of any fever-reducing medication. So just make sure that you're practicing good hand washing. But just remember, it's not too late to get your flu vaccination.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, we'll move forward. Next on the agenda would be bid opening.
These are bid openings for a LAP program. LAP, which Franklin County is a certified LAP agency, local area program, what LAP stands for. It's funding coming out of DOT, Franklin County Commission, and is the only LAP certified form of government in Franklin County. As the public may not know, we're doing a LAP program in Carabel, for the city of Carabel, and this one here is for Franklin County. It's a sidewalk improvement along Bay Shore Drive, South Bay Shore Drive, and I forget[1607.16] Franklin County Commission, and it's the only LAP certified form of government in Franklin County. As the public may not know, we're doing a LAP program in Carabelle, for the city of Carabelle, and this one here is for Franklin County. It's a sidewalk improvement along Bay Shore Drive, South Bay Shore Drive, and I forget where in.
It starts north Bay Shore.
Oh, north Bay Shore.
Comes down all the way to South Bay Shore, and then connect.
Okay.
That sidewalk is an island drive right now. It's a pretty effective program, project.
Okay, all right. So, Michael's open them up. The first one is, and these are construction bids, first one's from M. of Tallahassee. M. of Tallahassee, I don't know what M. stands for. M. of Tallahassee.
Bid bond?
Sure is a bid. Bid's right there. Yes, sir. Bid bond right here. And the total base bid is $391,008.05 and 70 cents. $391,08.05 and 70 cents. The second one is from Robertson Roberts of Panama City. Robertson Roberts of Panama City. Bid bond. Total base bid, $450,008.54 and 95 cents. $450,008.54 and 95 cents. And third and final. Four, oh, four, all right. Third and third. This is from North Florida Construction, North Florida Construction out of Clarksville, Florida. Bid bond. Where the numbers here. Okay. Total base bid, $625,002.28 and 35 cents. $625,228 and 35 cents. And now, fourth and final. This is, uh, DCL Civil Contractors out of Panama City, BCL Civil Contractors out of Panama City. There's our bid bond. Total base bid, $497,173 and 66 cents. $497,173 and 66 cents. And those are four bids. Recommend you turn over to our engineering firm, Combrish Dewberry, for a review. Be consistent with the, they have, in terms of the grant.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you ain't got the three of them, one of them too high.
Well, of course, there's a big disparity, so one of the first things we do is go through the bids and make sure that they are all consistent with the applicant, with, you know, we advertise for. With that big a disparity, something, somebody misread something.